Good evening. It's August 21st, 2023. I'd like to call to order the Common Council Meeting of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours prior to this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State Statute. I'd like to ask our clerk to confirm this meeting was properly posted.
I confirm.
I invite you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a lot of guests in the crowd tonight, and these are special people who have made West Bend beautiful, not just this summer, but I know for years and years, these are gardeners who have beautiful homes, and tonight we recognize them through Roots and Branches. And I'm going to ask Mike, I think you're doing this, to come to the podium from Roots and Branches to kick off our presentation.
Thank you, Joel. Yes, my name is Mike Faulkner. I'm representing Roots and Branches. And tonight, it's our great honor to present our Mayor's Beautification Awards and our Business Beautification Awards. And what the Mayor's Beautification Awards entails is, in each of the Aldermanic districts, we have two judges that go around and drive, walk, somehow cover every street in their district. And, you know, there's a lot of beautiful homes to choose from, and so the eight people represented tonight are the homes that were chosen, the front yards that were chosen for this particular year. The first thing I would like to do is just thank the judges, some of them who are here this evening, and I'm just going to run down the list. There's two judges in each district, and our judges this year were Mary Herrick and Judy Ducharme in District One, Linda Zarling and Ruth Faulkner in District Two, Heather Ristow and Nick Ristow, District Three, District Four was Karen McGellaroy and Pat McInty, District Five, Emily Jordan and Donna Kogler, District Six, Carol Borg and Lois Knoll, District Seven, Judy McCabe-Crudwick and Barb Leininger, and District Eight, Chris Jenkins and Leanne Jenkins. So I appreciate all the help and time that those people put in, and some hard decisions that they, you know, ended up making. So what I'd like to do is present the Mayor's Beautification Award winners to all of our individuals this evening. So when I call your name, what I'd like you to do is to please just go over on the side over there. Your aldermen should all have the plaques, okay? John Justice, did you make your switch? So we're good to go there, all right? And we're all set. So this year, our chosen beautiful gardens were District One was Sandy and John Chupa. District One Alderman, John. District Three, I believe, is missing this evening, was Mary Yolgers was in District District Four is Mike and Debbie Kincaid. I hear we have next-door neighbors here for this presentation. Jetson, there'll be another private reception at your house, they'll be over for the beer later. Just the last couple of words about the Mayor's Beautification Award. I thank a couple of people. Mayor Joel Unger, we had a really nice time the night that we went around posting the signs. It was fun seeing all the yards and meeting everybody and getting the tour, so I appreciate Joel heading along with us that evening. And I thought our coverage this year by the Daily News and by the, you know, the Cities Page, Roots and Branches website, that we had very nice coverage of our event this year, I thought, so I was really pleased about that. My other part of presentation ties the Business Beautification Awards, which is Roots and Branches does with sponsorship from West Bend Mutual Silver Linings. So in this case, we take, there's three districts in the city for the Business Beautification Awards, and those are nominated, nominations come in to Roots and Branches or to the city, you know, and then we have a set of judges that go around and check those places out. And those choices this year is the Barton area, the bid district downtown, and then the at-large area of West Bend. So those three ones that were chosen this year in the Barton area was the Barton House, and in the bid district was the Edge Salon, or the edge of the, up from Riverside, and then in the greater West Bend area was Woodridge Chiropractic. And so if you haven't seen any of those three places, if you're out and about, take a special note of those three places, and especially, you know, a couple of those places were places that have been closed or places that were sort of looking down out for a while, and what they've done now to beautify those areas, I think, have been amazing, so special accomplishments by those people as well. And Woodridge is sort of tucked in the back there, but if you don't have the chance, if you ever have the chance, you should go back and take a look at what they've done back there as well, okay? So I appreciate the time from everyone this evening, and again, congratulations to all the people here this evening. Thank you, and just thank you for talking.
Thank you, Mike, and Amy Johnson's here tonight, and all the great folks at Roots and Branches, to the judges who walked and drove up and down all the streets, did the hard job of judging. I had the easy part, the fun part, of going to celebrate the winners and see your beautiful homes. The hardest part of all, though, is obviously the gardening, and we appreciate you making West Bend beautiful. Thank you to Roots and Branches. Their mission is simple, it's to beautify our community, and we're very grateful for what you do, and congratulations to all of our winners. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mike, I just want to mention one other thing. Another big area of Roots and Branches are the adopte plots, and from the various adopte plots in town, from the new beautiful one up in Barton that Susan Steinheff spearheaded up there, the place looks beautiful, and then with the downtown area, a lot of those will be becoming...
Come up to the floor.
I wasn't planning on...
I know.
So the adopte plots are part of Roots and Branches as well, and so I just want to mention the Barton adopte plot up there, the new Barton Garden, that Susan Steinheff spearheaded, and then the ones downtown, which are sort of disrupted now, obviously, but those have been transplanted a lot of places, and I think you'll find that when downtown is finished, it's going to be a beautiful part, and Roots and Branches will definitely be a big part of that, and the adopte plots as well. So my last two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to put the Common Council Meeting into recess. We do have some other business to take care of tonight. You are all more than welcome to stay. This is a public meeting, but we do realize that you might want to go out and enjoy the evening as well, so if you'd like to leave, feel free to do so. Our Common Council Meeting is now in recess, and I will call to order the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. We have three items on our agenda tonight. The first is a Class B license for Washington County Youth Hockey Association, a Class B liquor license, which is the Kettle Marine Ice Center at 2330 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlich and Alderman Zinkshine. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the appointment of a successor agent, who is Brittany Morgan-Haim at Pick and Save North at 2518 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlich and Zinkshine. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item is a Class A combination license for Green Dog Market at 237 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlich and Zinkshine. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and I will adjourn the Licensing Board.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, award C-23-08, crack and joint filling of pavements at various locations. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to work on a reward of a contract, it is a contract that we do annually to fill cracks and joints in existing pavement to help extend the life of those pavements throughout the city. So we bid the contract again this year, and we had three groups of streets. We've been doing that structured bid, because if the prices go up for whatever reason, we can still do part of the contract instead of doing no streets at all and rejecting all the bids. This year, we received one bid only for this contract, and it's listed there, it's from Thunder Road. Obviously, they are the low bidder, since they are the only bidder, but they have not done work under contract for the city in the past. So we checked references with other communities where they did do work in the past three years, and we found that, you know, the references came back very positive, and we find that they're able to do this work for the City of West Bend. Therefore, we recommend that the contract be awarded to Thunder Road for the amount listed in the bid of $111,796, as well as a contingency fund for about 4.6% of the total bid for total allocation not to exceed $117,000.
Motion to approve. Thank you. Any questions for Max? Alderman Allen.
Yeah, Max, what was the pre-bid estimate on this, or was there one?
There was one, and it was lower than the amount that we have here. It was about $88,000. What we've found in the past is sometimes when the bids come out, we have more vegetation that grows in those cracks, and it's more work to remove that, and so sometimes the bids go up higher because of that, if we have a lot of vegetation that year. That happened a couple of years ago, the same thing, and because we asked the contractor, why is it so much higher than last year's unit price? And it's all that labor to prep those cracks before they can properly install the compound in the cracks.
Okay. Are there any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Item number two, a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures. Hi, Travis.
Hello. Good evening. We, the Water Utility, are in the process of submitting an application to the Wisconsin DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Program for potential funding or principal forgiveness or grant money to help us defray the expenses of a building of a new treatment plant. The resolution is required in the DNR application for this potential funding.
Motion to approve.
Any questions for Travis? There are no questions. Any motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Travis. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
The Finance Committee is called to order. We have one item on the agenda, resolution creating, I'm sorry, increasing appropriations, Wisconsin Department of Justice ICAC Grant Chief.
Alderman Dolnick, good evening, everyone. I come to you really this with two separate requests, one specific and informational, and the second really more for the efficiencies of both our department and this elected body. First off, in July of 2023, we conducted, we conduct almost ongoing investigations in collaboration with the State of Wisconsin and their Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. There's a grant program that reimburses us, not necessarily for our salary and benefits, but for any overtime accrued, so that we do submit for. And in July, we worked enough to earn $649.83 in overtime costs, and that was submitted to us through the automatic clearinghouse, and that check amount was placed in our revenue account for the police department grants. We're asking that you accept that and transfer it into our police overtime account. That's Ask One of the ordinance. Second is, it's very routine that we receive these small amounts, and, well, it's a significant amount, but these amounts are placed in, and we ask that you consider an automatic increase in our revenue and expense accounts for these future overtime grants. I note to you, is specific to the ICAC overtime grant program. If it was a different type of grant or different money, I'd sure want you to know about it, it would come in front of you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions for the chief? Go ahead.
Do we, are we going to, should we create some legislation or, you know, some type of process to automatically move those funds?
I believe that's in the request tonight, is the, in the resolution itself, would be to have that mechanism in place. Maybe Ian can speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The only thing I'm, I guess I need clarification, to authorize the automatic, so the, but the amount may be different in future years.
Correct.
So this is to authorize the mechanism?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? All those in favor signaled by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, and we're adjourned.
We'll now reconvene our Common Council Meeting for tonight. Again, it's August 21st, 2023. Our second presentation is Tax Increment District Update and Debt Presentation by our friends at Ellers, and I'll introduce Phil.
Good evening, everyone. Phil Coster with Ellers. Nice to be back with you tonight. Before I get started, I want to introduce a new employee, one week in, Kayla Thorpe, who is with me here tonight. I'm going to warn her now, she's doing this presentation next year, so take notes. Kayla came from the Village of Butler, where she was the administrator for the last 10 years, and has had previous municipal experience prior to that as well, so we're thrilled that she's with us. Also, before I get started, I wanted to thank city staff. They always help with kind of pulling together some of the pieces of this, so that we have the most up-to-date information for you regarding some of the tax increment districts. So as always, your staff does a great job of getting back to me with that information. Tried to scare you off with a 50-page presentation tonight, so there'll be a test after, that we'll be going through this. As in the past, I'm going to try to kind of get through this relatively quick. Part of this is educational, part of it's informational, but I'm going to try to get through this relatively quick, and then you stop me along the way if you have a specific question, or we can wait till after, and/or you can always reach out through Mark Jess or Jay or somebody with questions that may come up after the fact as well. So I'm going to cover three different topics tonight. One is tax increment financing. You have a lot of active TIFs that are out there. They are, they've come a long way in most of some of the older districts, I'll talk about that. We're going to talk a little bit about your debt profile. It has improved over the last decade or so, and I'll talk about that in detail. Levy limits, which take your budget process and figure out to kind of fit it within levy limits, which you've had to do now for a number of years, and then talk a little bit about some changes with expenditure restraint as well. But I'm going to start with tax increment financing, and again, I apologize, I know a lot of you have heard this before, but I kind of like this building block and then kind of build off of that with some fundamental understanding of what TIF is. And so I say TIF. And what is that? That's the actual tool that's operated by the Department of Revenue in Wisconsin, and a tax increment district is the actual district that is created. I'll be talking about each one of the districts in the city in a little bit. This is a program that's been around since '75, '76. It's a very powerful economic development tool, really the most powerful tool in the state of Wisconsin, and really allows you, the city, to capture incremental revenue from new growth that benefits the area, and allows you to capture that revenue and feed it back into that area to spur additional either redevelopment or development. So you'll hear me use TIF-TID interchangeably, but TIF is the program, TID is the actual boundary. There's the BUT4 test that we have to answer every time we create a tax increment district or do an amendment, and it's really the key underpinning of the TIF program, and it's really BUT4 the use of TIF, the proposed development could not occur. So when we start talking with companies and/or developers, working with their staff, we have to answer that question, do they need the funds? Because at the end of the day, what you want to make sure is you're not just enriching a developer or a company, but there's a true need there for them to either expand or build into the city. So we kind of don't think of this as black, as so black and white, we look at kind of the gray here, and we say, would it occur as proposed within the same timeframe at the same value level? You may ask for more amenities or open space or additional, you know, maybe if you're looking at additional stormwater ponds or things like that, that they want to, that are beyond what they would normally bring to the table, those are the kind of things that can, like, TIF can help assist with, with specific developments. So how do you get to that BUT4 test? We always look at it really these, in these four different buckets. One, you can have an independent third-party review of the developer sources and uses and cash flow to determine if TIF is needed. If you think about HKS and a few of the other more recent developments, we actually have had, we've had a third-party review where we've actually done a dive, a deep dive into their pro forma to prove out whether or not they actually needed TIF assistance. Is it a challenge site? Again, I'll go back to the HKS site, where had, we had, you know, purchased demo buildings, worked with We Energies to clean up the site to, for that development to occur. Extensive public infrastructure costs, Milwaukee Tool, if you think about that site, where you had to extend utilities, roads, to serve the Milwaukee Tool expansion into the city. And then lack of economic development in a community. You haven't really lacked for that in West Bend. You've had a fair amount of growth that has occurred, and a number of developers that have come knocking on your door, but outstate, when you get further outside of the metro areas, they, a lot of communities use TIF as a way to entice developers to come to their, to their community. Ultimately, the Joint Review Board, which I'll talk about in a little bit, will make the final decision if you've met that BUT4 test. So a couple of things that are always confusing is, people think that the value or the mill rate that somebody is paying in a TIF or out are different. That is not the case. So what we're looking at really is, when you create the district, there is a value there at the specific time that you create the district. That base value gets shared with all the taxing bodies, so the school, county, technical college, and the city all get your share of the pie. As development grows in that tax increment district, that's the increment, and the increment is what the city fully retains and are able to reinvest into the tax increment district. So the power of TIF is that you're capturing the full mill rate from new development that is occurring within the boundaries of the district. This is a little bit of a depiction of how that works. In the baseline, or for any property not in a tax increment district, for the development that occurs, the city will get your roughly 20%, 25% of the tax bill, but if they're in a tax increment district, the new growth that occurs, you receive the full mill rate, not just the city's portion, but the county, school, and a technical college portion as So what's the intent? Why is this, why did this program come to light? It really came to light back in the '70s to counteract the economic downturn that occurred in the '70s. The program has not been static. It's grown by the number and types of districts that can be created. It keeps being modified. I would say about every other budget cycle, you'll see changes to the tax increment law. Some have been to tighten it up, some to expand it at different times. So if you think about '08, '09, '10, when we saw a big downturn, that's when they created the ability to start doing mixed-use districts. So there's always a response at times, but really the intent is to promote development and redevelopment, and quite frankly, it's your only, it's your only tool that you can use at a local level to try to counteract other states and the proposals that they can provide, is through tax increment financing. So, you know, a lot of companies are international, and they can move anywhere, so you're really battling not just local communities, your neighbors, but you're also looking at the state and other, other states around you. And so TIF is really what is used as the primary tool to provide some type of incentive to entice them to either be here or stay here, or come here, stay here. So as you can imagine, a program that's been around since 1976 has all kinds of implementation and rules attached to it, and they change periodically. So one rule that has changed, I've been around a long time doing this, back in the day, I'll say, this test was a five or seven percent test, and what it is, it's the same if you're in Milwaukee or Pittsville, it's the same test. You can create new districts or amend the boundaries of existing districts as long as you're under 12% of the total value of the community. Once you're above that 12% threshold, you're called TIF'd out, and you don't have the ability to create new districts until you close out existing districts to get back under that 12%. So that is the one test that really holds true for everybody around the state. There's been some special legislation over the years that some communities have been able to enact to allow them to get over the 12% for some specific projects. The other is, you have to have contiguous areas, and they cannot extend beyond the corporate limit. So as you work on districts, maybe in, on the outskirts of towns, many times we have annexations. annexations as part of TIFs where the land has to be annexed in, and then it can be brought in as a tax increment district. But the contiguous piece is really key. If you look at all the districts, they have a little, they have some odd shapes to them, but it's really a reflective, reflection of the fact that you have to have contiguous properties, that we can't just jump over properties. And then the, the, many of the other requirements and maximum life limits apply by the type of TID that was created, and you have a variety of TIFs that were created over the years here in the city, and I'll talk about those in more detail in a little bit. So this has grown over the years, the type of districts. Back when I started, it was either, it was going to be a blight, rehab, or industrial district. Since that time, mixed use has come to light, has, has environmental remediation districts, which are very specific. So they all kind of come with these different caveats, but one is that at least 50% of, and you can see the test for each one, so mixed use, it's got to be suitable for a combination of industrial, commercial, or residential uses. That has to be at least 50%. Industrial districts have to be zoned and suitable for industrial development, at least 50% of that area. Same for blight or rehab, that you need to demonstrate that at least 50% of the property by acreage in the boundaries are in need of blight or rehab. And environmental, where you have environmental contamination, at least 50% of the area has to be environmentally contaminated. So that 50% threshold is different for each type of TIF, but at the same time, it has to be met depending on the type of district. Newly-planted residential, we've talked about that in detail, are allowed in mixed-use districts where it's newly-platted. In areas that have been previously platted, I'm just going to go right back to the HKS development, it's newly, it's new residential development, but it's, it's been previously-platted land. So that's why that qualifies. It's normally, if you think about farm fields where something hasn't been platted, then there's more restrictions around the type of residential and how much residential can be used. TID creation procedure, you've, many of you've been through this process with me. Do a feasibility study, which is the project plan, that tells you what you can and cannot do, what can you spend money on in the district. There's an initial joint review board meeting, county, school, technical college, city, and a, and a public member. There's a public hearing held by plan commission and then also by the city council. You actually don't hold a hearing, but you actually have approval process through a resolution, and then it goes back to the joint review board for final approval. So three approvals needed to create or amend a district. And after all that, you submit it to the state, and they do a procedural and legal review to make sure, they're not looking at the merits of the project, they're really looking, did you hold a public hearing? Did you have the notice requirements right? Those kind of things. So there's this more of a technical review to make sure you've done everything right through the process. Project plan requirements, I talked about this a little bit, you know, we need to identify a cost description of what costs are going to be paid for, the development, cash flow, financing tools, the life of the district. There's a series of maps that are required for each tax increment district. So it's, it's extensive once you're done with it. But one area that comes up on a pretty regular basis is what can and can't you do within tax, what can you spend money on and what can't you spend money on? What you can spend money on is a pretty extensive list. If you look at this list, it's pretty much everything you can think of. You have public works, you've got administrative costs that are related to actually operating the tax increment district, professional service fees, developer incentives, environmental remediation, you've got relocation. So there's a lot here that you can do, it's more what you can't that really is specific, and we really talk about in great detail with many of our municipal clients. One is constructing or expanding municipal buildings. We cannot do that. It's just not allowed under the statute. We get that question on a very regular basis. What if a portion of the, you know, it's just, it's a flat no for expanding municipal buildings. Facilities financed with user fees, they don't want us double-counting revenue. So if you're charging a user fee and/or impact fee, and at the same time you're using TIF funds to pay for that project, they don't really, we're not supposed to double-count fees. General government expenses unrelated to TID, you know, they, again, Mark's time or Jay's time or somebody's time that's, Ian's time, dealing with something specific to a TIF district certainly can be charged back against the tax increment district. What they don't want is just, just, you know, allocating a portion of your budget to be paid by tax increment districts that's not related to TID. And then newly-platted residential, we could talk about that at length, but we spend a lot of time on mixed-use districts to make sure that not more than 35% of the area by acreage is newly-platted. And then there's criteria under that as well, like you need to have more of a dense development, three units per acre kind of development in a TIF district. So those are the prohibited project costs that are kind of no-no's. Once you create a district, it's not static. We've done a series of amendments for many of your districts over the years. You can add, subtract property. You can do up to four boundary amendments as well. You could do as many project amendments as you want. You could do revenue sharing. You could extend the life of districts in some cases. If you recall, we've, we've gone through and distressed some districts here over, in the past number of years. So there's a lot of different amendments that can be had once the plan is put in place. So it's not a one-shot deal, then you're stuck. You can actually go back and look at amending project costs and/or the boundaries as well. So in the statutes, they're very clear about when you close a tax increment district out, and that is, one, when the maximum life of the district is reached, then you're required to close out the district. Two, that you've collected enough revenue to actually pay off all your obligations, then you're required to statutorily close out the tax increment district. What they don't want is you just keeping a district open, to keep it open and generate revenue with no purpose. So once you've met one of those two criteria, then you adopt a resolution to close out the district. And if there's funds available in the district, when you close it out, they get shared to all the taxing bodies. So if you have $100,000 left over in one of your districts when you close it out, the school, county, technical college, and the city all get their share proportionate based upon the tax bills. And unreimbursed project costs become a general liability of the city. So if you haven't recouped all your costs and the TIF ends in the red, that is a liability that only the municipality shares, not the other taxing bodies. I talked about extensions a little bit. There are a variety of extensions that are out there. We use these in cases where you may have advances that haven't been fully reimbursed back. Say in the early years, you advanced some money from the general fund or the utilities. We can keep the districts open to actually recoup those funds over time, and there's a couple of different types of, of extensions that are allowed. So I'll pause here. General questions? Everybody staying awake yet? That's good. We're halfway through almost. Yes?
So when you close out a district, you have a proportionality. Is that, that's not static, that's dynamic. So over time, you know, each of the bodies will have a different percentage. Is that recalculated?
Each year.
Every year?
Yep, each year. So, but you've got to close a district out in one year, right? So just say you close out TID 3 in 2026. If you look at what the, the tax bill, right, and you look at the allocation by, by each overlapping taxing jurisdiction, and you'll pay it out based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I continue on? Some best practices, you know, we really spend a lot of our time working with staff on best practices. You know, we're always looking to mitigate risk for the city, and that comes in a number of ways. Once is just kind of doing worst-case scenario analysis, what if development doesn't happen? And so you, you kind of use that with different techniques as far as different security provisions that are out there, letters of credit, could be deferred assessments, guarantees from developers, all those kind of things. And we're really trying to match those to mitigate risks to the city. But you can't fully, obviously, eliminate risk. One of the things that we're seeing, which we really didn't predict, you know, three, four years ago, is just significantly declining mill rates that are happening throughout the state. We've seen great property increases, but we've seen mill rates drop. It's really a reflection of levy limits as much as anything else. So years ago, your, your tax rate, overall tax rate in the city's probably dropped $5 per thousand over the last number of years. So that has an impact on the revenue that's actually being generated in the tax increment district. So you can't fully mitigate risk, but we try what we can through the planning process to do so. So some important considerations, you know, when is TIF used, process to request assistance. I could tell you, your staff is great in requiring that they put things in writing, companies and developers, so that we have something to react to. Hate to negotiate against yourself when you don't know what they actually want, so it's good to have something in writing. You know, term is really important. Some communities have a very strict policy that they don't want their districts to stay open for the life. They'll say, we'll work with you, but we want the district to close early, and set some guidelines around that. The pro forma review, again, if you're working with a developer like we did with HKS, where we did a deep dive into their pro forma to make sure there's a gap. Paygo versus traditional, that's simply, do they get funds on the backend after they've developed, or do they get some funds on the front end? And it's not an either-or. Some deals require both to make it work. And then what are the goals of the community? Is it job creation, redevelopment, continued development in your downtown? What are, you know, we've done a lot of riverfront development with, with your tax increment districts in West Bend. So what are your community goals as well? And incentives, this is a, pretty simple to understand, right? The developer says, we, we need the money at the beginning of the project, and the city says, we'll give you the money after you've completed the project, and then you've got to kind of figure out how to marry those two objectives for each party. But our goal always is, again, to mitigate risk and try to protect the city, and it's a combination of, many times, some infrastructure needed for the project to occur, and incentives on the backend is typically where we fall with many of the tax increment districts. So there's always that question, who takes the risk? Our goal is the developer or the company, but again, we want to make sure the project happens and they're successful as well. So how do you enforce those provisions? You've done everything here at the city, letters of credit, value guarantees, shortfall payment requirements if they don't hit certain targets, special assessments. They're all great, but you still have to collect, and you never want to get in that mode of trying to collect. It's just another challenge for a municipality that you don't necessarily want to get into, if you can avoid it on the front end. So I mentioned you had a lot of TIF districts, and here they are. You'll see that eight was closed last year, not much activity in eighth, so that closed. But you've had a lot of districts, they're all kind of listed out here. The last one we did last year was Sand Drive on the east side of town, but we've done a, a quick review of each of the districts, and thank you to Mark for helping us to make sure that we've, have all the most correct and accurate information. One of the elements that we always look at, I know the numbers are really small here and hard to read, is what is the annual debt service for existing TIDs? And it's, again, difficult to read, and what is it telling you? It's giving you a breakdown by district of the debt service that is due and owed by each of the district annually. And you can see, the older districts, most of the debt is paid off, and now we're, we're either reimbursing previous advances or there's sharing of revenue. And the later districts that have been created, you know, primarily 15, 16, and 14, the newer districts where debt has been taken out, we're, we're looking at larger debt service payments over the next number of years. But you can see annually about $3 million, and then it really starts to drop off in 2026. That is, sounds like a lot. That's down from previous years where there was more debt outstanding on the TIDs. This is my attempt at one-page summary. I don't know if it works or not, but it's a one-page summary, the little, the print is too small. First, great news, as I showed you last year as well, the DOR numbers came out, 8.1 finalized 8.15 for construction that occurred through 2022, value 23. So that, nothing that's occurred in 23 development is in these numbers, they'll come out August of next year. And overall, the increment increased from $391 million to $425 million. That's for all the districts. Each TID had increases in incremental value except for small decreases in six, 11, and 13, and they were small. It could be just small, you know, how property is valued. Some of those might be industrial as far as, you know, assessed by the state as opposed to locally. So small changes in, in those. TIDs five and nine, again, which are kind of the, I'll say, the east side of the river of downtown, where the art museum and such, that, that, those areas have had constant shortfalls over a number of years, and we have revenues from four and six that have been sharing to offset those shortfalls. So TIDs four and six have been very healthy from day one, and they are helping out five and nine, and according to Mark, and I trust Mark, he said through 2024, we'll see, hopefully, around that time. But we've been, this has been a slow process to hopefully get to the point where we can close four, five, six, and nine all at one time, and I think that hopefully is on the horizon. TID 10, there's been available TID funds covered, to cover recent shortfalls. That's the former Hendrix TIF district where you've seen a lot of development. Eleven and 13 modest shortfalls continuing TID 11, but new development in TID 13 have eliminated shortfalls, so minor shortfalls there. TID 14, kind of interesting, there was a pretty good drop in the Milwaukee two value, tool valuation by the state, which I think will result in a short, short-term shortfall, but again, it'll be eliminated with new development that's, that's being proposed and approved out in that TIF district. So it's an overall really strong position, and that's reflective of the Moody's report, I'm sorry, S and P report that we get every year when Standard and Poor's does the rating for the city. They dive into tax increment districts, and they're comfortable with where you are with the tax increment district. So in the past, primarily TIDs five and nine, there were shortfalls that were, before we did the revenue sharing with four and six, there was shortfalls that were made by the general fund, water utility, and sewer utility. The water utility was fully reimbursed in 21, and we're slowly reimbursing now the sewer utility and the general fund. Those will be fully reimbursed back, and those are funds that'll be available in your general fund, in the case of the general fund, and the, for the water utility, it'll go back to the water utility fund. So, I'm sorry, the sewer fund. So that's, that's happening, and it's going to be continuing at least through '24, and then hopefully we'll be looking at closing out the district shortly after that.
Phil?
Yes?
Why would DUR drop the valuation of Milwaukee Tool so soon after it was built? Do we have any idea?
I don't. I'll let Mark speak if he wants to on that topic.
With a new construction, especially in industrial, the only thing the assessors have to go on is actual development cost, the, the construction cost of the buildings and the infrastructure and the rest. The minute it goes over to the state, they have to use by standard assessment rules, and they'll look at predominantly income-based approach on it, and it can drop significantly right after the construction.
So this is not an...
It's not unusual, it's just startling.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, it was. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, I'm going to kind of whip through all the districts in a little bit... All right, I'm gonna kind of whip through all the districts in a little bit of detail just to kind of give you a feel for what's transpired. TID number three, Wingate, Hardigan and Cerrograph, it was really Cerrograph that started TID number three initially, their expansion. Created in ninety-five, it's an industrial TIF. It's still a partnership with Ziegler-Benz. You're in a different mode with them now, they're getting reimbursed back. This is a district that had a twenty-seven max, year maximum life with a ten-year distressing. It's not going to take the full ten years before this district closes out. I think we had projected last year to close out somewhere in the next two to three years. So we think this district will be closing out around twenty-seven. Can't spend any more money out there. The expenditure period has passed, meaning you really can't incur any more costs out there. We did a series of amendments, and the incremental value is thirty-eight million dollars, which is up from last year. So that'll hopefully result in a little quicker payback, and hopefully this district closing out in the next couple of years. West Bend Corporate Center has been great from the beginning, industrial district created in ninety-seven. Continental Properties was the, was the developer that the city had a partnership with, twenty-three year TID at that point. We did a ten-year increment sharing amendment, and the reason is, again, this is sharing revenue with five and nine. So that's why the distressing or the, the revenue sharing occurred. Again, can't spend funds out there. It's a donor district for five and nine, and there's almost a hundred million in value that has been created out in the West Bend Corporate Center. Wisconsin Street and Depot area for TID five, created in ninety-eight, Blight District. This one kind of got caught up a little bit in the downturn in the econ, in the economy, eight, nine, ten, where there was projects pending and then got pulled or delayed. And so there was a distressing of this district. It allows us an extra ten years if need be of revenue. Again, there, it does generate revenue, there's almost twenty million in value out there now. So it generates a decent amount of revenue, but it still relies on some money from four and six. And again, hopefully, we'll see this close out in the next couple of years. TID six, very successful district since day one as well. Menards Paradise Drive, I see there's a few new restaurants when I drove in, Panera and Chipotle, I think, being built. Created in ninety-eight, industrial district, it was really built at that time for, I want to say Menards, but it wasn't Menards. Was it Menards first? Okay, it was Menards first. And it's expanded, obviously, in that area significantly. Here again, the revenue sharing has been put in place to help with five and nine. And again, can't spend monies out there, the expenditure period has passed, so you're about sixty-five million of increment in TID number six. East Industrial Park, TID seven. Created in ninety-nine, it's kind of a, I don't put it in here, but it was a bit of a partnership with the county at that point as well, is an industrial district, maximum life in twenty-twenty-five. Can't spend money again, the expenditure period has passed, and existing increment is about nineteen point five million. This is, this district has struggled over the years, but is doing okay. Nine, Veterans Avenue Auxiliary Court. You know, there's only three point seven million of value out there, but you do have a few pilot agreements out there as well, where there's payments that are being made through pilot payments. Blight District, thirty, twenty-thirty is the maximum life, but again, we have the distressing here, and they are receiving support through TIDS four and six as well. River Shores was a Blight elimination project done in oh-four. Hendrix Development Group at that point was the partner. And this is, this is definitely a district, if you think about oh-four, and it was all starting to tear down or redevelop out there, and then this got caught in the economic downturn big time, eight, nine, ten, and things slowed down for a while. So we did distress this district as well. The amendment occurred in two thousand and twelve. There's still an expenditure period, twenty-twenty-six, you could still spend some dollars out there. But there's almost fifty-three million in increment, so we've seen good growth out there in that district. Eleven, River Road Industrial Park, Cryle Camp was the partner, created in oh-five, industrial district. Again, a distressing that occurred in part again due to timing of when this district was created. Amendment in thirteen, about twenty-eight million dollars of existing increment. Gail Company, TIF district in, in number twelve, was created in oh-eight as a rehab district, and there's been a lot of success in that area for the redevelopment that's occurred out on that site. The expenditure period is still out there, twenty-thirty. So you have a little bit of time to spend dollars if you need to. I know there's been another proposal, let's come forward, and it was about sixty-four million dollars of incremental value out there. It's been a successful district since the beginning. The former Amity Project in twenty-ten, industrial district, again, Cryle Camp, Cerrograph were partners on a, on a, the initial project out there. That was built and about five point eight million dollars of value in that district as well. The West Bend Manufacturing Center, we just talked a little bit about the Milwaukee Tool situation. It was significant, you'll see the second column or the row from the bottom where it says, existing incremental value dropped pretty substantially from seventeen to about eleven point five million. So it was a significant drop by the DOR in valuation. We could expect to see approved development, some of the approved development will ensure future cash flows in that area. There might be a little bit of a shortfall for a brief period until they kick in. But that did have a significant impact in that district. Fifteen, HKS Rehab with HKS Holdings recently created, so a lot of expenditure period maximum life, existing increment ten point three million. If you recall, this got delayed for a period of time, about six to nine months. Right now, the incentives are being paid as, as a pay as you go, so they're not going to get any money until they actually generate the revenue. So that's going to be a safeguard. We also have done some capital borrowing in this district for a portion of Main Street and the, and the Riverwalk. So right now, we feel confident this district's going to be fine, but the delay, there was a slight delay with, with that project. And then in twenty-two, we created the Sand Drive, the Sand Drive, TID sixteen area. Right now, no incremental development, and, and everything is, both development expenditures on track, so nothing really to report on this one at this time. So that's a quick run-through of all the districts. I know Mark does a more in-depth analysis of each of the districts that he has as well. But we do track financially what's happening with the districts and make sure that when we can, we look at other tools to help struggling districts, and that's what some of the distressing that occurred and the revenue sharing that's occurred over the years. So as I've mentioned a few, three, four, six, seven, we think all of those will close out relatively soon, five and nine probably shortly after as well. So what happens when you close out a tax increment district? A couple of things happen. One, again, we're not going to close them until the general fund is fully reimbursed back, the sewer fund is fully reimbursed back. When that occurs, you get under levy limits, an additional bump from the TID closure that will have the ability to essentially increase your levy the following year from a TID closure. From a budget standpoint, it's an important time to do some real planning around that increase that, that occurs. At the same time, you have an increase occur from a TID closure, you'll actually see a drop in the mill rate because you can't capture the full amount of the TID closure under levy limit. So you'll have the net effect of, of increasing your levy and at the same, ability to increase your levy under levy limits, and at the same time, the city's mill rate dropping when you close out districts. So it's, it's worth waiting for. We'll get there eventually. And then again, we're going to continue to, to monitor and make sure that the sewer and general fund are fully reimbursed back over the next couple of years. That'll help, again, the sewer utility and the general fund as well. So that's a lot on TIF. And all, each of the districts, before I jump into debt, debt management expenditure restraint and levy limits, any questions? Alderman, Allen?
Yes, Phil, you talked about the state uses a different formula to figure out what something's worth. Is there an appeal process? I know there's an appeal process if they, if my, my assessment increases or decreases, I, I can appeal that. Do we have the ability to go back in if we think that the state made a mistake and...
That's the city, yeah.
And contest that? Is there an appeal?
I'm not aware of a formal appeal process to go back to the state, but I, Mark, if you've expressed that...
The owner can appeal, just like they can against any city assessment. But I don't believe there's a formal appeal process for a city to go against the value. They certainly work with us to justify it, but there's usually, unless it's a blatant mistake, they're, they're usually very well documented, and it's usually by comparable values for, from other municipalities. And again, they're dealing in equalized value, not in assessed value when they're actually doing it with the TID. So there's a difference there, there's an adjustment factor so that every community is compared equally when you're comparing these TID numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions before we leave the world of TIF? All right, the next section is pretty quick. I'm just going to go through a few spreadsheets and talk a little bit about your, at least past philosophy as a, as a council. And maybe this is a bit of a carryover from previous administrations, but I think it's been really kind of rooted at staff level as well when we start talking about capital expenditures and such. So, you know, for quite a while, there's been a, a philosophy to reduce the overall debt burden of the city, which has occurred pretty substantially. And so what that really means is you've been paying off more principal and interest than you've been incurring, taking on debt. So that's, that actually has occurred over the last, I'd say, five to ten years. So typically, historically, you borrow between three and three and a half million for annual general capital projects. And what changes that are either kind of a legacy project, I think like the police expansion, we did that here at City Hall, or a, a larger scale project like that will change that number. Or if we're borrowing money for like tax increment districts, that'll be outside of that, that three to three and a half million dollar range. So that's ballpark about what you have borrowed for in the past. The second, or the third item was to keep the debt burden at least fifty percent or less. And so again, you're like every municipality in the state, up to five percent of your total value you can borrow up to for general obligation purposes. And at one point, you were slightly over that fifty percent threshold, and as a result, there was a, a real push to drive that number down, which has occurred. And I have a chart that'll show you how far you've actually dropped already. So that was another philosophy. And then take advantage of refunding opportunities. You know what's going on with interest rates. We're not refunding any debt anytime soon, so we can ignore that one right now. Then the last, really, I'll go through this more detail, is preserve flexibility under levy limits, and I'll talk about this in more, in more detail. The city has done a good job with that. You've had flexi, you have flexibility still under levy limits, and that's not the case with a lot of communities, they're kind of levied to the max. So those are the, the different debt policy and debt management policies that we've kind of been working with for the last decade, I'd say. So the first I wanted to touch on was where you are with that borrowing capacity number. And remember, I just mentioned that, I would say, less than ten years ago, you were over fifty percent of your borrowing capacity. And that's not just because of the general debt you issued, but it was a lot of active TIF districts as well. So if you look at where you are today, you're at about twenty-five percent of your debt limit. So you're at fifty percent, now you're down to about twenty-five percent. And that was one of the, the goals, was to drive that number down over, over time. And so that's, you've been very successful in driving that number down. And this takes into account borrowing money every year at that three and a half million dollar range. So we're not just ignoring what's going to happen in the, in the future, we've built that into this model, and you're still at roughly twenty-five percent. So you've been very successful in driving down your debt burden over the last number of years. It's not just prepaying, or paying off debt, it's also the growth that you've seen in the city. That's the other contributing factor in that calculation, and you've seen a lot of growth. So very successful there. The other was debt levy, and a challenge, anybody to read all those numbers, but I, what this is, is your existing debt, general obligation debt, what sources pay it off, and then taking on future debt. And what does it mean to your mill rate, your, your debt levy and your, your levy for debt service? And that's what I'm trying to boil this down to, and I blew up that because I couldn't read it either. And so the last couple of columns on this page takes into account all of your existing debt, you're offsetting revenues, which could be water, sewer, TIF, what your, and your future debt issues that we have built out roughly three and a half million dollars a year. And if you really focus on the, on the third column from the right or left, the middle column, you see total tax rate for debt service, and you're hanging right around ninety cents per thousand. So years, a couple of years back, you were about a dollar fifty per thousand. You've cut that substantially as well over the next number of years. But more importantly, if you look at that first column, the total net debt service levy, what you actually levy year in and year out remains really flat. And that's been kind of the goal as well, is to not have any kind of roller coaster in your debt levy, but actually a pretty flat levy amount each year going forward. So you'll see that, this again, takes into account a borrowing every year at roughly three and a half million, and we're able to kind of maintain that number, which makes it much easier come budget time, that you're not trying to deal with fluctuations in your debt service levy. So very successful in kind of that model as well. What will improve this is when you close out some of the TIF districts as well, because you'll see a bigger jump in valuation. So that's your debt philosophy, kind of where you are, you've driven down your overall debt, you have a very flat debt service levy, which is great. So levy limits and expenditure restraint, like most communities, you've had a modest amount of net new construction available to you, growth through net new construction. This is the last four years, we've put down six hundred thirty-four thousand, one seventy-three, four eleven, and three twenty-five is the latest. So three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of available levy increase as a result of net new construction that just occurred for next year's budget. Now, you also got the, you're getting money from the, through the Act twelve, which is going to be a supplement to your expend, to your shared revenue as well that will help out. But about three hundred twenty-five thousand for next year. And I think you're all familiar, when you go through the budget process, that, you know, the operating fund is subject to levy limits, capital projects are subject to levy limits, but debt service is not. So that's an adjustment, one of many adjustments outside of, outside of the levy limits that you, that fluctuates. Historically, and again, a lot of small numbers, the city has retained a lot of flexibility by not using the debt adjustment at all. So what you've done is you've, you've not taken one of the key adjustments that most communities take, and you still have that flexibility. So I know there's a lot on this page, I do this so I can understand the math behind it too. But if you look at the last column on the right, you have about two point nine million dollars of unused, unused debt, unused levy capacity. And that's pretty unusual around the state. So you've, you've done a great job in your budgeting process, and you've not had to tap into all of the options available to you to increase the levy. Now, having that flexibility, as indicated, is unusual. We, we have a lot of communities we work with that are tapped right to the last penny and are just kind of living on net new construction. You have a lot of flexibility in the future, for whatever purposes in the future, and that will continue. My last slide, and Kayla can come up here and tell me I'm wrong if I'm, if I screwed this up. So Act twelve changed everything for, for expenditure restraint. So historically... So historically, your general fund expenditures were increased by a percentage which included a combination of CPI plus 60% of your net new construction, and '23 was 7.7%. And so we knew that number last year was 7.7%. Due to Act 12, the payment received under expenditure restraint in '24 will be similar to the aid payment received in '23, which is 571,000. And reason we think that'll be the same is because the pool amount is not changing much, and the number of participants isn't going to change. Because if you qualify for '23, you qualify for '24. If you didn't qualify for '23, you're not going to qualify for '24. So we think that the ERP payment, which will come in, will be roughly the same when it comes to budget time. In addition to that, the report, there would be no report to be filed in 2024. And since there'll be no comparison between the '23 and '24 budget, there's going to be some potential flexibility available to the city going forward. And we'll have more guidance on that as we get further, further along into next budget cycle, but not this budget cycle. So key word, flexibility for both levy limits and expenditure restraint. And I think that'll bode well for the city. I'm going to look back at Kayla, see if I did okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. So she's better at this stuff already than I am, is when it comes to expenditure restraint. So again, I think from, just if you think about the finance as a whole, you've been able to really maintain a strong budget process, through the strong budget process, flexibility under levy limits, continued flexibility under ERP while driving down your debt and also driving down your, your debt levy on an annual basis. So all those goals that were set forth years back really have been accomplished over the last decade. Everybody's awake yet. It's really good news. I think you got great news going forward as far as TID closures are coming up and you're, again, you have a lot of flexibility going forward when it, when it comes to budget time. Alderman Allen?
Phil?
Sorry.
Quick question.
Yes.
Can you send us a copy of this presentation? Complete with eye charts, please.
Complete with what?
Eye charts, you know, the ones we couldn't read back there.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Yes, we.
We made some quick modifications to it just before the meeting. So yes, you will receive it, but I'll probably send it instead of Phil, just because we.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yep.
We'll move on in our agenda tonight. Our consent agenda has items one through six that were just approved in committee. We'll take those for action tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I thought you were done. I'm going to give that to Alderman Model on the left, and Alderman Allen with the second?
I believe it was Matt.
Alderman Sternig with the second. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is actually a final resolution for levying and collecting on special assessments for weights and measures, and this requires a public hearing tonight. And so I'm going to open the public hearing. If anybody from the public wishes to address the common counsel tonight on weights and measures, please come up to the podium. The time will be yours.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close. Thank you, Alderman Model and Alderman Allen. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our item of business for consideration tonight is final resolution for the levying and collecting of special assessments under Wisconsin State Statute 66.0703 for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. And it's a weights and measures inspection performed by the State of Wisconsin Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection in pursuant to Municipal Code Section 12.26.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zinkheimer. Any comments, questions, discussions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. We're going to have, start with two reports from the Plan Commission meeting on July 5th and on August 1st.
So for the July Plan Commission, we had a public hearing and a lengthy discussion, which you've probably read about in the newspaper, which is the conditional use permit to allow for the Wisconsin and Southern Railroad and the Watco Companies to transport low-level radioactive waste from a power plant that's being demolished. This, we're not talking fuel rods, this is the building rubble and other materials. And so that was approved. It'll be taken in sealed containers to the end of the railroad line at Rusko Road and put directly onto rail cars and shipped to Utah. We had a second month of discuss, a second meeting to discuss the request for a conditional use permit for, for Mr. Han, who wanted to put a food truck at the, his property, 801 West Washington Street, the former bank. He presented a revised plan. It was unanimously approved and, but nothing has taken place since then. And then for the meeting on August 1st, Holy Angel Cemetery is going to be building a columbarium and a maintenance facility building at its cemetery. And so we approved the site plan as well as a certified survey map to bring together three parcels into one for their cemetery. And we had a certified survey map and approval of a site plan, all related to the buildings on water and forest. That's being, that's referred to from now on as the F Street Project. That's the former West Bend Transit, thank you. And it's 105 units on that site plan, which was approved. Some good news, Forte Bank is going to be building a branch on Wildwood Road north of West Washington Street, and we approved a site plan for that 3,600 square foot building. So everybody on social media can complain, once again, we have too many banks.
Thank you, Alderman Dolnick. Any questions on Plan Commission? Thank you for that. We'll move on to our Airport Commission meeting on August 14th.
Approval minutes. We discussed Airport Master Plan, which are still waiting to receive response from the FAA. We talked about the Airport Improvement Program update, and Financial Aides and that is still in the process and committed the list. And we actually approved the list of projects for the, it's a five-year plan, basically. Airport Budget Review, we reviewed the budget and made a resolution to forward that to the city for submittal approval by this group. Airport Manager gave a report. The EAA week went well. They're going to look at maybe doing some kind of shuttle service for 2024 from the airport up to EAA, because there's a lot of people we feel could use this airport, and then they drive up for the day. The pavement, repayment for runway 1331 is on schedule. Looking at replacing the windsock, fix fences. Equipment is in good shape. They're starting to plan for a new morgue to replace the toral. Crack filling on areas of the runway that need it. Once, something that could be on the horizon here is an issue with the National Guard regarding possible PFAS contamination within their lease area. We know what that does to wells and drinking water. And they're looking at the installation of a new PAPI, which is a locating device. And there's some issues with that as far as trees possibly shortening the run, one runway. But they'll look at that and hopefully that'll be taken care of. Other than that, our next meeting's on November 2nd.
Thank you. Alderman Sparks, any questions? We'll move on to our Library Board meeting on August 15th.
Sit back, relax. You guys got some popcorn? Because I have two meetings to report on, seeing as how I wasn't here last month.
Right.
So let's talk about the July meeting, which was held on the 18th of July. Where after the pledge of allegiance, we approved the consent agenda, which included expenditures for May and June. We were given the financial reports detailing expenses and revenues for the library, the outreach program, and county revenue contributions. Discussion was held on expenditures that were unknown to the board, stuff like duct covers in the building that actually increased efficiency in our HVAC system, which is in need of help. And work done by Dean Dergia, local wrought iron contractor who repaired the railings in the patrons park. These are all examples of items that the board monitors to ensure accountability in our financial transactions. On a positive note, I'm pleased to acknowledge donations to the library from local individuals and businesses like Delta Defense, Glacier Hills Credit Union, Cornerstone Bank, the Pleasant Valley Vet Hospital, the West Bend Lions Club, and Bank 59 for contributions to programming needs. Events like the Summer Reading Program and Story Walk are just examples of the programs that benefit from their generosity. So thank you to them. Steve Theory, the director, reported, gave a report that provided information on the roof project. It's completed, yay, it's done, and hopefully over with. Railings at the patrons park was fixed, as I just said. And as we heard in Jay's budget brief last month, attention is being paid to building items that will need to be addressed and are being included in the budget process. Kudos were given to all programming events, especially the egg drop event that we had recently, that we were saved by the assistance of the fire department, fire department, because it's a lot fun, it's more fun to drop eggs off of a fire engine than it is off the top of a brick building. So that was kudos to everybody involved in that, library for reaching out, and the fire department for assisting. So we also welcome a new employee. Her name is Jada. She works in the circulation department. The assistant, speaking of the fire department. The Assistant Director Brad Nye gave us some numbers concerning door counts and circulations over the past six months. We have exceeded the numbers put up by the Mead Library in Sheboygan. We know what the Mead is. That's the big library in Sheboygan that just about everybody's compared to. So we were doing very well compared to them. So congratulations to the entire team on that effort. The Library Board President presented that she would need information on Steve's evaluation. We do that too. Earlier than expected due to some vacation scheduling. Agenda items included reimbursing staff member Terrica, who took it upon herself to make some purchases during the youth farmer's market, because some booths just weren't getting involved in that. So she took it on herself to make some purchases and make everybody feel good and all that. And the board felt that this was a good activity to support and felt that we could reimburse her for that selfless act, and we took action on that. We also looked at changing our fine structure to better reflect programming throughout the other county libraries. A lot of places are going to no fines. So we're looking to get on board with that too. Children will be fine free, but there will remain some incentive for older patrons. So Mark, make sure you bring your books back, okay? Yeah, I know you do. So the August meeting, which was just held on, last week on the 15th, we approved the consent agenda, which included the July expenditures. Financial reports were given with highlights saying, being funding for various passes that can be checked out from the library for places like the domes in Milwaukee and the Milwaukee County Zoo. All these programs are very popular, making trips for children and their families more affordable. So that was very appreciative. And also included in the financials was a donation in memory of Barb Kauth, and we thank you very much for that contribution and her family. Steve presented that we had a celebrity in the library recently and showed us a video from Spectrum News One, the Wisconsin video series, which showed a patron, Jim German, if you know Jim. He was filmed in the library giving an interview. So that was pretty cool. Steve showed that to us. He also provided information that while he was on vacation, imagine this, he was on vacation, and I don't know about you guys, but if I'm on vacation, I'm not checking things out according to work things, okay? I'm like sightseeing or playing golf or things like that. But he was in Austin, Texas, and decided to check out the library there, and guess what he found? He found video games, okay? Video games in the library. And he says Austin uses video gaming computers to reach out to patrons using audience-specific material for study breaks. So in between doing schoolwork and things like that, they have some downtime, and the video gaming was a way to attract the younger folks to get involved in that. So it's, yeah, he found it intriguing because it reminded him of the approach that we use here at the, our library, that our library is more of a living room and not the old-fashioned quiet rooms like in days past, you know? Shh, don't say nothing, okay? We have those rooms too, but again, most of our library is pretty, pretty interesting living room. So staff provided reports like new connections with the senior center, forming two new book clubs, the library as staff attending the AARP meetings with the city. They also introduced some new fall programs, stuff like plant-based diets, scrapbooking, my favorite, aromatherapy. And bread making, yum. Go figure, all this at your library and so much more. The July 17th Youth Farmer's Market was so popular, they're making plans for an indoor market sometime in December. The Library Board President continued to emphasize our circulation numbers. Not that there's any competition there, but can you see it? America Ninja Librarians. Wow, just kidding, okay? Agenda items included Steve's building report and its list of needs, budget priorities for next year. Building maintenance tops the list. Fund balance and accounting, we talked about, and reimbursement for the foam party. Anybody see that foam party that they had out front of the library with like, what, super soakers and foam sprayers and things like that? They said it was pretty cool. So the next meeting of the Library Board is scheduled for the 19th of September. Any questions?
Have you considered partnering with Parks and Rec and having a Dirty Librarian Mudrun?
I'll write that down. Thanks, Mark. I'll write that down.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist.
Thank you, sir.
Our last report is a Parks and Rec Commission meeting held on August 17th.
It does sound like it's got some potential. It really, really does. We had a great meeting. We did our yearly park tour. We went around to a number of different sites, upcoming projects and whatnot. We discussed a new, a potential for a new skate park. We had a gentleman join us that is interested in, it's been his life skating, and he's going to be involved in possibly getting on a committee and getting something together to find a new spot for a skate park for us. We also discussed and visited the, the location for the new all abilities playground. That was really cool. I hadn't actually, I knew we were doing it up in, at, what do you call it? But I didn't, I didn't realize it was way in the back like that. That's going to be kind of cool. It looks like a perfect spot for it, considering the plans. We also discussed and visited the Bicentennial Park over on, off the 18th. We went down and visited and discussed the West Side Riverwalk project, and kind of saw where they're at with that. And the last thing we did, went up and visited the site for the, the potential site at that time for the, for the new bison sculpture up at the Firefighters Memorial Park. We'll talk more about that in a minute. And then we came back and went about our normal agenda. Unfinished business, permission to proceed with the Ice Age Trail improvements at, at Ridge Run Park, Ridge Run, that's what it was. New business, approved a few special events. And the last item on new business was, in fact, the bison sculpture. And we did approve putting that in with, with the caveat of finding the right location so it doesn't interfere with the Firefighters Memorial. We accepted a number of donations. I'm not going to list them all, but thank you to those folks for your generosity. And a few reports, and that was about it.
Thank you. Alderman, but Chuck.
Any information on how the swimming pool operation went this summer at all, Justice?
He was waiting on a few more statistics. We talked about it a little bit, and everything went, went really well, but we don't have final numbers yet.
Okay, thank you.
Next time, next time.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah. Yeah, you mentioned finding an appropriate location for the bison sculpture.
Yeah.
Is that within the bluff park?
Still within the park, yeah, yeah. We just, we discussed having it a little bit further south, so it doesn't impede the view of the flag or the memorial sign and stuff like that, so. We, yet to be determined exactly where.
All right. Any other questions? Any other announcements for the good of the order? Alderman Allen.
Hey, go downtown. If you haven't been, it's outstanding. Every time I go down there, I, I see new, new flat work, and it looks really good. It's going to be exciting, and I encourage you to take the time to walk, to walk Main Street. It's not bad, especially if you, you know, don't go during working hours and walk right down the center of Main Street. So I would recommend that. I also recommend all the restaurants. So go, go patronize the restaurant.
Very good. Alderman Butchlick.
In addition, the Riverwalk. I did the Riverwalk. That is beautiful. That is awesome. Great job, Park Rec Department.
Any other announcements tonight? Moa put on one heck of a chalk fest over the weekend. It was a hot day yesterday, but the artists did a wonderful job, and they promoted the heck out of the event, so did Visit West Bend, and they had thousands and thousands of people come through West Bend and enjoyed, enjoyed Moa, the grounds, businesses around. We've got German Fest coming up this weekend, and then music, or not music on Main, cars on Main up at the Fair Park will be Labor Day weekend, so a lot, lot of events coming up yet here in the city this fall and leading into the winter, so. Any announcements from the city, Jay?
Turn your mic on. Pop-up Riverside, pop-up, what was it, a beer garden, Riverside Park.
Is it 1840?
1840.
1840 Beer Garden on Friday, Riverside Park?
Yeah.
Those are always fun.
Be there, I swear.
If there's no more announcements, we will adjourn our Common Council meeting. Our next meeting, our next meetings in September are on September 11th and September 25th. Have a great evening. Thank you.